Evening Meramek, today is the March 18th, 24. For Commissioner's Meeting of the Meramek Village District. Public participation is offered by webinar. And as always, you can go to mbdwater.org and get a copy of today's meeting agenda. Every meeting agenda has a web link where you can access that web link and watch this meeting on Zoom. Or you can call 646-876-9923. And there's a webinar ID you can enter as well. As a courtesy, Meramek TV is recording this meeting. It'll be played later on their website and typically on channel 6, which is the government cable channel. So at this time, I'll call the meeting to order at 5:02 and ask everyone to rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, great. So we have a quorum in the room. John Lyons to my right, Aaron Clement to my left. I'm Don Preventure. And we have Wolf Von Sean joining us. Can you state where you are calling in from?
Yeah, I'm stranded callers at my, at my house. I have four confirmation drives in Meramek.
Thanks Wolf. Ken Ayers has been excused from this meeting. So we'll start with the finance and human resources review with Kristin Mar.
Work for the end of February, which brings us to just shy of 67% through the year. And as of right now, our net income is $1.2 million versus last year at about $844,000. Our current revenue is running at about 4% over budget through February, which if you took 67% of our budget would be about $4,013,000. Interest income is still significant due to the inflation rates. Expenses, they are running at about 28% less than budget through February. Our salaries are running at about 5% less than the salary budget. There is an account which I had shown last month, but just that the amount has changed slightly. Equipment, 70010.1. There was a transfer of $6,600, which was actually from FY '23. It was, it actually belongs to a capital improvements project. So FY '23 is closed, that adjustment was made for this year. 70040.2 new meters, there's lots of construction going on, so those new meters being installed in those houses. We had also asked last month if we could kind of have a projection of where we might end up for our net income. If nothing changes, we have a status quo, we're looking at about $1.5 million for our net income. Any questions on any specific account?
I have one, a couple just on, I might be timing, I'm not sure, but on the miscellaneous income 40407. It looks like there's a big deficit there.
Yep.
Okay, and then the backflow and service entrances. Those seem to be a little bit below the 67%. Just, are we, are we scheduled to do backflow?
Absolutely, that's also due to timing. They're done in specific periods.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing doing them for any reason or something.
We're actively testing them now.
Okay, good. Yeah, anybody else?
Moving over to the front of the balance. All accounts associated. Our net income will be about $1.1 million. Our unrestricted, as of right now, is 8.2 million. With accounting all the rest of the accounts, it's a total of 22.9 million. And that is again spread out over the different funds to show as in it's not all considered operating. Any questions on that one? Trust activity. The end of February, our land trust is 1.6 million. Equipment and facilities is 3.2. System development is 1.1. Legal, 108,000. And water purchase and O&amp;M is 364,000. That's it, that will be at the end of the year. Yeah. So if all the items pass. The warrant articles with 800,000 going into equipment facilities. We should be roughly about 3.7. And then the other warrant article, which was to water purchase and O&amp;M with the 200,000 being added, roughly about 267,000. Any questions on those? Rest are. The form of work force. Jill had also shown me an email about getting a little more detailed with the budget memo. With, considering basically last year, we did our equipment and facilities from warrant article into the trust was 200,000, now we're making it 800,000. And kind of adding some explanations to that. I don't know if you guys remember the summary I did for you guys for the actual budget meeting we had, which was very detailed with a bunch of accounts. Maybe taking up vendor names and stuff that are, maybe people don't really need to know, but maybe taking some of this information and putting it into the budget memo. Cause I was pretty detailed with that.
Yeah, are you talking about the text I sent today? I think it was just that, those two less line items there.
Which, which I did go actually over with you, you guys for the budget session.
Cause I, it's just that we are deciding to commit more money into the reserve account, basically.
So for this, what was in there is that yes, we're committing more, but it was factored in with the rate change and things like that, that I can put in the budget memo to.
I, I, yeah, I.
Ask you out some questions if possible.
I'm thinking it's gonna, it, it stands out, so it's gonna draw questions. And instead of having all kinds of misinformation that people circulate around on the forums, it might be good to be able to point to something and say, this is what it is. So I'm in favor of just adding that in there if you want.
Just as a reminder, I did do it without the vendors. And Wolf, I'll email you a copy. Just read, read, and if you agree, then I can make. Those adjustments in the budget memo to make it a little even more detailed.
If you just wanna read the adjustments to me, you don't have to email me anything.
Okay. So that way they'll get the budget memo with some of that information. Copy of the actual budget that will be available at the annual meeting.
So where in here would be the.
The warrant articles. At the second page, about halfway down.
Oh yeah, so Article 6 about the $600,000. Well, that's changing from 200 to 800,000, right? That's that item. And then what was the other one that went from 150 to 200,000?
That was the water purchase and O&amp;M. And mostly is to increase that due to the fact that this fiscal year is our last installment of the 106 from Sancho Banes. So we kinda wanna leave up that account.
Yeah, I think just putting those two in there would be good.
With surprise.
I, I think so.
I think so. The only thing that Article 7 is really clear that it's O&amp;M for Sancho Banes, but Article 6 doesn't really say what that topic is. So I just might wanna say, incoming, some sort of like, yes.
What you called each article.
Yeah, just so that, you know, when you're looking at it, you're like, oh, for upcoming projects. What are the projects? You know what I'm saying? It just might add a little more clarification. Because 7 kinda shows you already what it's about.
That I could do in terms of. I can put the title of the article. Upcoming projects, I can refer to the capital improvement.
Even if you just put, I think, the title of the article, like, so what, you know? What account it's going into.
A couple of examples and what.
Right.
Some of the capital improvement.
Yeah. Even if you even said upcoming capital improvement projects, then they know where to tie it back to the budget.
And the other ones?
No, I think as far as I saw, those were the only two that kinda stood out to me.
That's easy enough. Then I'll do that tomorrow and send you guys a new version. And you can blast it, and then I can have Amy update it on the website and we'll copy it for the meeting.
Sure. Anything further on any of this? The questions on the capital reserve balance or anything else for Kristin? Look like it, so Wolf, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Alright, so that being said. Let's see here. Like we got Underwood on the line, so we can move forward with the regular session agenda. To hear an update from Underwood Engineering regarding the polishing pilot study. So Peter, are you handling that or is Keith joining you tonight? I don't know if Peter's on.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Yeah, yeah, Keith is coming on too. I just, I just texted him and just said, ready.
Right.
Can we make these actual items done?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't you hold off a little bit, Peter? He can finish the rest of this stuff.
I'd say I really only have one and it's very.
Okay.
So here he is, here he is now.
Alright, good. Hey, Pete, how you doing?
Good, good.
Good. Yeah, so if you want, you're on here for the pilot study that we asked you guys to put a proposal together. Looks like you have a proposal as well as from Blue Leaf in front of us.
I apologize for the late getting it to you, but Jill made copies and put it on your desk. You should have what's called ESR 72 Amendment 1.
Yes.
And then attached to that is Blue Leaf's part of it, but that Blue Leaf's part of it, we're carrying them as a sub. So I can go through what we're proposing here. If you'd like.
Yeah, it would be good, probably go through some detail, seeing how this is just kind of in front of us now, so.
Yeah.
Maybe you could do a little more explanation than the norm, I guess, on this, if you could.
Yep, and I don't think it'll take too, too long, but last summer, you authorized us to do some planning for the pilot work. That was ESR 72. We had given you a budget of $125,000 in two parts. The planning was $25,000 and we suggested budgeting 100 for the pilot when we're ready. You did, you, you, I think you committed those funds. You only signed us up for the $25,000. We delivered a tech memo to you at the last meeting. And that was the result of the first effort. So you, we still had $100,000 set aside for the pilot work. Based on the tech memo and our discussions last meeting, we put this pilot project together and we agreed to get Blue Leaf involved. Now that it's constructed to help run the pilot, set up the protocols, do what they do best because they are pilot guys, that's what they do. They are the same group that's worked with us and Meramek on all the other pilots we've done with you in the past, both Iron, Amang, and East San P-Fest. So they're also familiar with you and you, and your facilities. So we carry them under our ESR, so Task 1 talks about their part. And in that task, we've identified. An opportunity to just make any final updates to the pilot protocols. Blue Leaf will mobilize and actually set up and start up the pilot, so they'll come in with the medias that we select, get them up and running. Train your staff on what to do and how to run it, what to pay attention to and when to sample for it. We envision providing a summary to do checklist, because if you remember, your staff is gonna run this, it's been built. We're setting up the protocols, but your staff are gonna actually operate it. When the, when the, then the data or the samples will be collected by your staff and then shipped with, shipped off to EPA. And that's actually another unique piece to this, is that EPA is engaged, they're paying for all the sampling and analysis. All we have to do is get it to them. So that's what your, your staff will do. And then Blue Leaf, once all the data is collected and reported back from EPA, they would write a summary report with that documentation. So that's the pilot itself. UE is involved, Underwood's involved because of our familiarity in what you're trying to do, polishing versus alternative medias. So we're gonna be engaged with all of that as part of the startup, part of the review of the pilot during the operation for involvement, engagement, and consultation. And then including meetings with EPA, coordinations with EPA, meetings with you guys. And at the end of the day, we'll evaluate the data and actually write you another technical memorandum with findings and recommendations and how this media will benefit you. Whether it's polishing solution or an alternative media as primary. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. I mentioned at the beginning that you had set aside $125,000 for this work, you only authorized us for 25. Between those two tasks, we're coming up with a budget of 66,000, so it's significantly less than the $100,000 available. So if you set aside the 25, that's spent money, you still had 100 left. Where came our Tasks 3 and 4 totaling 66. So the way we set this ESR up is just showed that you still have a balance at 34 that we're not touching. We're calling it a balance or a contingency. I guess it's there if we need it for something else. But what you'd be acting on tonight, or when you're ready to act on this, you're acting on authorizing Tasks 3 and Tasks 4 to reprogram that 100,000 to get us engaged, to get the pilot running for 66,000. So that's, that's a summary. Hopefully I captured the highlights and see if you have any questions.
I have a quick request, just a quick request. The other day I came across a picture, and I don't know when that was, but I think it's something that Ron shared, which was one of the images, which was a picture of one of these different manuals that you guys set up for the rapid.
Pilot tests.
Department testing. And I actually thought this, this could be very interesting for the public. We do a lot of, you know, pretty impressive stuff, right? And some people have stated MBDs ahead of the game here, and maybe even in the leadership role with that PFAS mitigation. I think it would be fun for people to see where their dollars go if we shared a little bit more often. Some, you know, some, some, some little tidbit, for example, when these scales, scaling tests are being done. Showing how that looks like and why we do it and what the purpose of it and, and, you know, what we've learned from it and how we share it with other communities out there and the, the community that's fighting, that's fighting this issue. So long story short, I would like that you guys also take some time, and maybe that's Ron and Jill, or maybe it's you guys, but just take an opportunity of quick snapshots or quick videos while you're doing certain things and provide it to staff. And then staff can do with it what they want from, from a PR standpoint.
Got it. Yep, that makes sense and easy to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good idea. So.
GAC filter, media replacement that we're doing right now. I mean, that's some serious work that we're doing, there's serious money being spent, we're actually cheaper, coming away cheaper, in some cases unexpected. Let's, let's share it with the community so people recognize what they're, what, what they're investing in.
Well, you know what we'll do to that point is when we put this checklist together on what staff needs to do, cause we may not be out there all the time, but we can maybe talk about key milestones to make sure we got good photos or videos or something to capture the things talking about.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So it looks like in Blue Leaf's proposal that they have. Let's see here, 3 GAC media, 2 alternative adsorbent, and 1 anion resin. Alright, so we're doing 6. Doing 6 columns then. So I guess really you're, like you said, you're only looking for approval of Tasks 3 and 4 this evening, right?
Right.
And then it's good that you explained that that remaining 34,000 is a contingency.
Yeah.
So there, if we need it, and if we don't need it, it won't be expensed, obviously.
Right, we, yeah, we wouldn't go after, we wouldn't be billing against that unless you authorize us to.
Right, good. So I was wondering in the last, I don't know if you were here at the last meeting, Lynette was here.
I was listening, I was listening in as well. Yeah.
There was a second resin, I don't know which one you're looking at here, is, is it, is it the Purelite or what was the other one, LanZest or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, the 6 that were listed in the report, LanX wasn't one of them, and I'm, I'm gonna be honest, some of this will have to defer back to Lynette. But I will, I will say that before we buy the media, collect the media, obtain the media, there's gonna be another shot at this. So like the, the ones that were listed in the report were either Evoqua, Calgon, Norrit, Florazorb, Dexorb, and Purelite.
Yeah, the Evoqua one, that's the current media that they're using, so we wanted to have that as a, as a baseline. We know what that does, we can kinda, you know, make sure we can compare these pilot results to actual results that we're getting with the vessel, so. Yeah, so we wanted to have that control in there.
Yeah, as a control.
Yeah.
Even though we're not, we're kinda moving away from it, I understand that, but.
Yeah. At least we have the history data on it though, that we can compare to, so.
Yeah. Cause you never know, you might get different results in the pilot columns for that media than we're getting in our full scale.
Exactly, that's, yeah, then we'll be at least be able to correlate it, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, cause my first thought was like, why are we bothering with this? But I can understand from a scientific perspective that you wanna have a comparison there, I guess.
Yeah, we tossed around that idea here too, and we thought it would be best to include that in there.
Yeah, I think my only, just give me a minute, Wolf, my only question was, does it make sense to do Purelite or the LanZest? And I don't know what your opinion is on that one. The reason I brought that up was because, I don't know how you pronounce it, LanZest, is that how it is? But that media, LanX, they, they had a longer design life, I guess.
Yeah, that was the one that was a crazy design life, right? That was the one that they, yeah.
Which, you know, I don't know, skeptical about anybody's, but Purelite had provided an estimated design life that was less than what we're getting in our own carbon media, so.
Yeah.
Just looking at those two things, you know, someone's willing to make bold statements about their media. I, I almost wanna take them up on that, but at the same time, maybe Purelite's being a little bit too conservative, and I'd like to see if, if it would work better, but I don't really know. So.
Didn't one of them offer to do a test column? Bring their own test column in, which would have freed up one of our columns, and I thought we were gonna include that in.
That's true. So I don't know if you can just kinda confirm that if.
Yeah, okay. We'll do that.
Was it, was it LanX that was planning on doing their own or another vendor?
I don't remember who was doing their own.
Yeah, if we get exact of the one, but yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember either. And Lynette, who's in Florida enjoying a much-needed vacation, knows, but.
Yeah, so if you could just remember, kinda just follow up on those two things.
Yeah, will do.
Alright, sorry to interrupt you, Wolf, go ahead.
Not at all, not at all. It's not always easy, as you know, to time that right. If, if we're running out of column space for media we would like to test, and I think we should test rather more than less because we need information more than anything. How many gallons of water do we need for a test? Do we expect for, for one of those, you know, bed lives to test? Because, let me finish that thought, maybe please. What I was thinking is, if we're running out of test columns, and the amount of water that we need to run through that test column is manageable. Maybe would make sense to actually siphon off some of the same water we're feeding the other columns, the current columns, into a holding tank. You know, even if it's temporary, if it's a couple thousand gallons. You know, and, and then run that same water that we ran through the first test batch again through the remaining samples. With this, you know, with the second fill of the, of the available columns. You know what I'm trying to say? Just to get a proper baseline with the water that we're running through that.
You talk, cause we're doing this on the raw water, so you're talking about taking what goes through the pilot and then collecting that? And then maybe looking at like polishing studies in the future or something?
No, no, what, what I'm saying is, we wanna make sure that we compare apples to apples, right? So if there's a media that doesn't make it into the first round of tests, and of course my dog's barking because the wife's coming home, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Sorry. What I'm saying is, we wanna make sure we run the same sample of water through all media that we want to compare with each other. Because our raw water fluctuates a little bit as well, depending on which well we're pumping water from, more than from, from others, right? So unless we're doing this. Well, we have fluctuations even within one well, right? Depending on how hard we pump the well. So what I'm trying to say is, would it make sense for us to siphon off some of the water that we're feeding that first touch, first test batch into a separate tank? So we can later feed that water with the same concentrations to a new batch of, of, of columns that we, that we filled with, with the next batch of testing, of tested media.
But you wanna be like keeping that for like, like months? Store it, cause this test is gonna run for a while.
It will, okay.
Yeah, this is, that might be a challenge only because this thing's supposed to, or could, cause we're looking for exhaustion and breakthrough. It's designed to run for up to a year, so.
Some of our testing in the past was actually fairly short, it was.
It was, yeah, cause you're thinking of the RSS CTs, but they didn't do exhaustion or breakthrough like this is, so that's, so.
Okay, then forget about that, sorry.
Yeah, that'd be a little tough here because of the volume of water.
Okay.
We're, we're running this to, into the waste basically, right? The, the discharge water.
It'll go all to infiltration.
And if I'm not mistaken, the flow rates are small here, right? They're less than.
Yeah, they're gonna be fairly small. I'm just, I'm looking through the report, right, the piloting protocol right now, trying to find the flow rate.
I was looking too.
I thought it was less than even a one or two gallons a minute or something, even smaller than that, if I'm not mistaken. Which for the size of the, of the filters, it's proportional, yeah, right.
Yeah, if it's, if it takes that long for, for the first batch to be tested, then my, my, my thinking doesn't work out.
I feel like, I feel like as long as we use the Evoqua media and all.
I feel like as long as we use the Evoqua media and always have a column of Evoqua medium, then we should be fairly consistent to be able to compare it to. Cause we've had that Evoqua media in all the wells. We can compare the timeframe of real life breakthrough. And so as long as we're comparing everything to that Evoqua media, I don't think it should matter that much, you know, like if we get, if say one of these pilot columns breaks through like in a matter of weeks and is absolutely trashed, if we put another media in that and start that column at day one again, as long as we're still comparing it to the Evoqua media, apples to apples, then I feel like there it's still really great results. We're still gonna get usable data out of it.
Yeah. And then Ron, are you operating those still with both pumps coming on uh at the same time?
Our mixer.
So I'm sorry, which well's four and five?
Yes.
And and both what, right now well five is down, but will be yes.
Yeah, so maybe we just make sure we operate it that way that, you know, to, you know, kind of answer or address Wolf's concern is whatever we're doing to pilot testing, we're running both wells at the same time. Then you're you're getting, you know, as close to the same concentration, I guess, or.
I'm just gonna ask a question as well. So as we as demand increases and we increase the flow, should we, should we be increasing the flow through the pilot or are we gonna keep that steady?
Well, keep that steady. I just found it in the report. It says point two gallons a minute uh per column. So if we go six columns, we're running at one point two gallons.
Yeah, so it's seventeen hundred gallons a day.
I was just wondering if wells three and four have the ability to throttle their output a little bit.
Yes.
Alright, so.
Those four and five?
I'm sorry.
I'm on the same page, I know what he's talking about.
If four and five are bill, our ability to throttle the flow out of the wells that way, because I know if we're producing too much water and the demand's not there. You might want to shut wells four or five off.
Where?
But then that wouldn't, that would be delays in the pilot test, you know?
We've been running minimal all winter long.
Right, okay.
We've been keeping four running, five running, and that was gonna be in my super potential report, but five is down. Um, I think it might be a a pump issue, not not the motor itself, but we're gonna do that.
Okay.
Tomorrow. Checking that out, but.
Alright, well, we can, one of the things we can do is talk more about that and and remember it's kind of environmental sampling. I mean, this, there's a lot of other variables in here, so we want to minimize our variability, but also don't want to interfere with your operations, so, you know, that some degree, we want to make sure we're maintaining that, but we we should, we can sit down when we kick this off and talk about some of those things in the protocols and the and the startup and the checklist to make sure we're doing the best we can to get the best data you got and um including, including those considerations.
And if we need to adjust, so if we need a certain, we can, the ultimate goal is to keep it running constantly. Right now, even without doing the pilot. So if we have to adjust somewhere else, we can do that as well.
Okay.
Well, seven uh seven down a little bit or or, right, you know, two and nine.
Uh, so the only question I had is to confirm, there's no sampling costs in the proposal, because we're assuming EPA is going to be funding all of that? Is that confirmed? Is that?
They did confirm that, we just had a meeting with them uh last week.
And uh, did you mention the amount of samples based on the frequency of, like, did you calculate all the samples?
Do any calculation, but he knows what we're.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, and part of the scope is includes constant contact with EPA, so um we'll keep, we'll include them in the kickoff and the early coordination items to confirm all that, but it is the assumption that they're paying for all of it if we get the samples to them.
Alright.
They're going to just an EPA lab.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
I just want to make sure.
Some talk about not going to an EPA lab because um they were thinking about, at least some of the discussions at the last meeting. Uh, they were, you know, could be threw out, hey, you know, the the lab that we go to, they come pick up the samples and take them. So then they're like going, oh, maybe that's good, you know, so they had to go back and talk about that, but.
Oh, yeah, that was Alpha Labs, right? Yeah.
So that part of it is not totally nailed down yet, I guess, so.
Yeah, so that, because that's, that could be a considerable amount of money in this test, that's not, uh, we're assuming they're gonna cover all of it. I think I feel a little more comfortable if we said, and I don't know in here if there's a protocol that says we're gonna collect the sample at every so many bed volumes or something. Uh, if someone can like calculate the number of samples, just to tell EPA, oh, by the way, you know, we're talking about like five hundred or two hundred PFAS samples here, just so you guys are aware.
They were actually looking at doing more tests than what we are initially talking about ourselves.
Really?
So we can, we can check on that.
Yeah, I just don't want someone to come out and, you know, EPA to turn around and say, oh, we had no idea it was this, you know, scale. We were only thinking about covering ten percent of that. Cause that could be tens of thousands of dollars. Which I just want to know now instead of later, you know, that's all.
Yeah, so.
I think just kind of getting on the same page and I don't know, even though if we can estimate the number of samples, because it's kind of hard. We don't know when it's gonna, when breakthrough is gonna happen, and it would be a good.
We can at least say like, okay, we're taking samples at this frequency, so every month we're expecting this many samples or as long as it goes, so then we, you know, at least have some sort of way to qualify it, I guess, yeah.
And I think if I remember during the rapid small scale column tests that were done before the treatment plants were built, didn't we collect like more frequent samples and just put them in the fridge on hold? And sample like, say we collected like every month, and then we'd submit the the two month sample, and if it was non-detect, we wouldn't bother submitting the one month sample. And then collect the three month sample and submit the fourth month sample. And if it was positive in the fourth month sample, then we'd go back and submit the third month sample, just, just so we can kind of like save on some of that. What's that?
So be way out of hold time.
I didn't know that there was a hold time on PFAS.
Those two weeks.
We, we did do that, um, and I can't remember what the limits were on hold time. I don't remember there being anything that was worrisome at the time, but we can look at that too.
If that's a possibility, I mean, I just think that that would be a good way to
Yeah.
Just not use all of the expenses that if we don't need to. There, that that was okay on the rapid small scale test, so I I was under the impression that there was a different hold time for some reason.
Well, the rapid small scale tests were short duration too. There, you know, we were talking what, I can't, four to eight weeks instead of, you know, a year. So we'll have to look into that, but um the point is, we'll tabulate the number of the samples and get that all to EPA, so when this thing starts, they're on board. We'll confirm them being on board.
Yeah, if they can turn around and say, you know, if we could say this is how much the maximum samples we think will produce. And if they say, yeah, we're okay, we can cover that, I'd just feel a lot better knowing there won't be a surprise coming at the end of this, you know? That's all.
Yep, understood.
That's where, that's where I'm coming from.
Yep, but you're right, it's the assumption is MVD is not paying for that. You're paying for the collection and the shipping, but not the analysis.
Oh, wow, really?
Nope, they're paying for the shipping and the whole
Okay.
Supplying the labor, they're 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 paying for the uh sampling and the shipping and all that.
Okay.
I think we have extra.
Any idea where their lab is?
Uh, Lynette said in her email that it was two typically they have two labs that are contracted with in the Carolinas, so I guess it's either South or North Carolina.
Alright, that's what we brought up. We've got this lab, it's out of Massachusetts, that picks up and delivers bottles for at no charge. So they were gonna check back and see if
They can do that.
They're approved by DES.
Or that only because they have contract.
Yeah, so.
Contracts, I think it might be locked into it, but he was gonna ask.
Okay. I'm I'm thinking the EPA has their own lab, is that not the case? So they probably want to use their own lab instead of something else.
Contract.
But is it contracted lab?
They also have some protocols they need to follow for data validation, so you're not gonna get the turnaround times as quick as we're used to either, so.
Yeah, which is fine. I mean, this is a long term, ongoing test. It's not for compliance or anything, so.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that.
Right, when it breaks through, it's not like it's going in the water system, it's just going down a drain so that we can see the data.
I mean, ultimately for free, the price is right. Alright, um, any other questions from anyone, or do you have any more to um discuss, Keith?
No, no, that was it. Apologize for getting to you late. Um, I think Lynette was trying to wrap up seven things, so she could go on vacation, but she got it done Friday, and Pete and I cleaned it up this morning, so.
Good, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you, I know you wanted to get going on it, so we're we're good. I don't think we hit anything else.
What'd you say, Ron?
Dexorb was the media that
Oh, okay.
Possibly doing their own.
That's right.
Set their own columns, so we'd get the extra.
Also, it wasn't even the the Lanex. Alright, well, one way or the other, I think we'll figure out what we want to use at some point, um. Anybody else have any other questions on this? I guess um I assume we're looking for approval of this tonight to get things moving along. Which would be tasks three and four, which totals sixty-one thousand dollars?
I think sixty-six.
Sixty-six thousand dollars, yeah. And this is coming out of the budget? This this has already been allocated in the budget, is that correct?
I'd have to look, um. That's, I did make a note on that to look as well.
Or I don't know if it's in the um capital reserves.
I think it was, it wasn't aligned, it was aligned for, but I want to say it was coming from capital reserves. Initially, I thought.
Talking about.
I had it as a wash, I believe.
We do have it um in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, capital reserves, PS, PFAS polishing treatment, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so I think it is in capital reserves.
Capital reserves, but I think, is there a note beside it that said, that says possible uh offset?
It says total hundred and seventy-seven thousand. But there is like a little note that it would be more, but we don't pay that, so I don't. Yeah, it does look like it's coming out of capital reserves.
And this is the equipment and facilities capital reserves is under?
Yeah.
I'm just pointing this out.
Twenty twenty-four.
In case we want to, because if we're gonna make a motion, I think we want to include typically where the funds come from. So that being said, if there's no other questions, anyone wants to move forward with this with an official um proposal, what am I looking for? Motion?
Didn't we already, didn't we already move on that before?
Um, I think it's in the budget, we must have approved it already.
Oh, if if we even specified there's coming from the from the capital reserve, I thought that was a motion we did at the last meeting or two meetings.
Maybe it was, and then if that's the case, I don't know if we have to even approve this or not.
Well, I I can tell you there's a PO assigned to this, if that helps. I did three, three seven five nine. And so we have a a reference to a PO of three seven five nine that authorized a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, we must have done this already, it's just a detail.
And it is in the line item under equipment and facilities, it has like.
Probably all that we have to do is authorize the next two tasks then.
Yeah.
Cause it.
Yeah.
We voted on anything at the last meeting about it? Love you.
No.
I don't think we did.
No, you didn't. I don't recall you, well, not when we were present, you didn't vote on anything.
Right. That's because we asked for this to be submitted first, so we know what we're.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you guys tell us if we need to vote or not. If we don't, then if we all agree to move forward with it, some kind of confirmation is all I'm kind of looking for.
If you want to move forward, I can, I can move forward to the next two tasks, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody good with that? I'm okay.
We allocated the budget before, so right now it's in Ron's hand.
Right.
Ron can advance the tasks.
Well, we we uh, we had an ESR for a hundred and twenty-five, but you, the board authorized just task one. The
Okay.
The twenty-five, so we, if you're comfortable with me, just, we do have the, you know, the, it is in the budget.
Yep.
Uh, and it's capital reserves where it's coming from. I'll just, I can sign the ESR and and go with it.
Yeah, that's true, everybody else is fine by me.
If we don't need any more funds uh released, then we don't need an, need a motion to my knowledge, so.
Right.
Go right ahead.
Alright.
I'll send you a co, a signed copy tomorrow, Ron, and then we can go from there.
Sounds good.
Alright, uh, is that all you guys were on on the agenda for here?
I believe so.
Think so?
Yep.
There, are there any action items you want to check real quick that has anything to do with Underwood? Let's see. Or are the action?
I don't think so.
Alright. Guys are off the hook.
Whoa, wow, good.
Kill us. Good night, boys.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Good night. Sharing this to us. Have a good one.
See ya.
Alright, good, so um, I think the uh next item on the agenda, um the solar panels, uh discussion. Um, that's been, where where do we stand on that? Do you have an update on that?
Um, Cole and Jeff are on now, Cole works for Solar Pros.
Oh, great.
But um who wants to go first, Cole?
Uh, I can intro first. Uh, how's everything? How's everyone going?
Good, good. Thanks for coming on today.
Thanks, really, mountain air goes. Thanks, thanks for the invite, guys, um. Yeah, so me and Jeff have been working with Jill and a couple of people in the office with you guys on the board to build up some type of proposal to some degree based on kind of goal setting for what solar projects look like for municipalities across the board, because sellers, solar as a product is solar as a product, it like sun energy produces out of DC and we invert it to an AC and kind of so on and so forth, but by program, that's where it really comes into play for different situations, whether it's a residential, commercial sizing, um, that can differ, but also how you go about going solar differs very much so depending on tax liability and just kind of like what benefits you guys the most, like bottom dollar, what's gonna make the most sense for your municipality. Um, so Jeff, if he wants to do his intro, he's a he just got off the boat in Hawaii, so he's uh, he's having a great time, and I don't know if he's that I think I hear.
I saw, I saw Wolf's background, and I thought maybe he was at the place, place next to me.
You guys should switch backgrounds, I think.
No, I appreciate you guys giving us some time this evening, um. I think these discussions for us with Jill and team started, uh, gosh, maybe a month or two ago. And really, as Cole kind of alluded to, it's about determining what what makes the most sense for for you guys and um when you talk about solar, there's a lot of different options and different routes that you can go. Um, you can obviously purchase solar panels, um, the big the the biggest program right now, or the biggest benefit around purchasing solar panels right now is the thirty percent federal tax credit, which you guys obviously would not really be able to take advantage of because you are a uh municipality and don't have much federal tax liability. So as we've kind of discussed and kicked this around with with Jill and tried to determine what makes the most sense, um, we've kind of ruled out purch, you know, purchasing solar panels where you're gonna spend likely hundreds of thousands of dollars, perhaps millions of Um, we've kind of ruled out purch, you know, purchasing solar panels where you're going to spend likely hundreds of thousands of dollars, perhaps millions of dollars for a system. Large enough to generate the kind of power that you guys need. And more than likely, I mean, there are solar loans and things like that that you can, that you can do, but to be perfectly frank with you, the interest rates and dealer fees that they charge on that. Would, would probably not be cost beneficial for you guys. Um. And so one of the other options that a lot of other municipalities that we work with take advantage of is what's simply called a power purchase agreement. Where for you, there's no, there's no capital investment, there's no upfront cost, there's no out of pocket cost, there's no loan. It's just simply an agreement to purchase solar energy at a lower rate than what you're paying for your power right now. And um, how the program works is, is there's, there's investors that would come in and provide the capital to upgrade your facility to a solar utility. And that would be a combination of either panels on rooftop and or ground mount systems. Part of it is we would do a survey of the property and really determine the most feasible area to put this uh, uh, the panels. Typically, a power purchase agreement is a twenty five year agreement where we would provide the power for, for the facility at a guaranteed rate. And um, I would say normally on average, your savings is about fifteen percent. The other benefit that you get is if you look at around nationally and what's hap, what's happening with utilities and specifically with, with energy costs. Um, they're going up at uh, at a, at a huge rate. So the national averages, you see about a five percent increase. In um, um, electricity costs each year. Depending upon regions, it's even greater than that. If you start out on the west coast. Uh, California, over the last seven years, they've seen their increase of anywhere between fifteen and twenty percent each year over the last seven years running. Arizona just took a seventeen percent rate increase uh, the first of the year. The state of Oregon, P G E is the utility company there. They just took a nineteen percent rate increase. So we're starting to see these rate increases move further east. And the nice thing about this power purchase agreement is there's a cap on what your rate can go up each year, and that cap is two percent. So which is less than the rate of inflation. So inflation right now, I mean, I think the Fed's target is to be, you know, three and a half, four percent is what they consider, you know. Uh, um, a reasonable level of inflation. Last year, I think the national average was closer to eight percent. Um, and so the nice thing about this program is you have a cap on what that rate's going to go up every year, and that cap is two percent. So with this program as well, like if you were to buy a solar system, you'd be responsible for, you know, the maintenance of the system each year. If a panel or the, the inverter or something goes out, that obviously would be covered under the manufacturer's warranty for a time. But the manufacturer's warranty doesn't cover labor. Um, and so the nice thing about this program with the power purchase agreement is. You have twenty five years of basically maintenance. So if a panel goes out, if the inverter goes out, if anything happens. We monitor the system as well for you, so there's a production guarantee. We'll know how much your system is supposed to produce every year, and we guarantee that. If it ever dips below that production. We would be monitoring that and we would see and know that it's not producing what it should. And then we, we'd schedule a maintenance call to come out and perhaps the, the panel's out or something's wrong with the inverter. But we handle all of that for the duration of the term of the uh, of the agreement. So obviously on our end, where you've got multiple facilities, I think six or eight or ten, ten different uh, areas that consume power. Um, it's, there's a, a significant amount of work on the front end for us to not only design the system, but to come up with. With production calculations and estimates and all that kind of stuff. So what, what we typically do is before we even. Invest all the time and the effort is we just make sure that everybody directionally is on board with going this direction. Does it make sense? Is everybody on board with the fifteen percent, you know, minimum cost savings that we're going to see from this program? And if, if everyone directionally is okay with us charging forward, we typically would just have you sign like an L O I that says, yeah. If we can hit this fifteen percent cost savings, then we're comfortable moving forward. And then we'll go uh, go to work. We typically will do a site survey where we'll have our um, technician come on site, survey the property. Do all the sun readings, calculations, um, and then we'll start to kind of design layout and determine where the panels will go. And it's probably going to be a combination of rooftop and ground mount, depending upon the area. At that point, once we get kind of the preliminary designs and everything back, we'd have a follow up meeting with you and kind of present what that looks like to you. Hey, here's what we're thinking. Um, and then it's just kind of step by step. We just continue to walk this walk together as long as everyone is on, on the same page and. And ultimately, you know, sometimes the design is, is limited by um, efficiency and production and shading and all of those kind of things. And so um, as long as there is a willingness on your part to explore that with us. Um, then we're, we're committed to coming up with the optimal design to hit that cost savings target for you that, that we're all, you know, hoping for, so.
If I may, um, I just want to kind of clarify too. So what they're looking for tonight is not a commitment to purchase. They want to, the letter of intent only right now, right, Jeff?
Correct, yeah. Just a letter of intent that says, yeah, this directionally sounds like something we'd be interested in. That fifteen percent, that would be acceptable to us if we could save fifteen percent on our um, electricity costs. And then we just, you know, kind of move, move forward on this, but um, we've, we've done this enough to know that. And this is great. We got all, all the decision makers in the room because we've done this before and we end up spending thousands, sometimes tens of thousands of dollars and then. You know, the right person wasn't the one that gave us the green light and then, and then everyone's disappointed, so um. It's better just to get the group on the, on the phone on the front end and just make sure that this is something that we're all wanting to pursue together. And if that's the case, then we're happy to work with you guys and see if this makes sense for you.
I really want to see other options before I made any kind of commitment to you, Jeff, to be honest with you. I understand where you're coming from, but I wouldn't say I'm on board with saying, let's go to the investor group. Why did you decide to present that rather than us owning it?
Sorry, what was the question? You cut out a little bit.
It's not cutting out. It's just I got one vocal cord and that is all. Why did you decide to present the investor's strategy rather than M V D ownership to us today?
That's a great question. So the, the way that, the reason why if you were to purchase solar. Um, if you were in California, even without the federal tax credit, it might still make sense to purchase it. But right now, your electricity rates of what you're paying range anywhere between sixteen to eighteen cents a kilowatt hour. And uh. And.
That much?
No, I think it's less than that. We have, we have a um, bulk agreement or something, right?
I'm not seeing that.
Thirty grand a year, um, a month.
Yeah, so, so it's, you, you, you guys have an agreement based on the supply of the power. Ever source charges delivery fees based on how much you consume no matter what, because there are ever sources parallel.
So you're adding all that together?
Yeah, because it's, what, what we base is just the overall cost of your power. And that's how we differ between the percentage of what we can save based on the program that we think is going to be best fit for what the goals were, just set in, set in stone.
Yeah, so the, the, the all in includes generation, distribution, transmission, everything. And I think the agreed upon rate that you have with the co-op, I think is somewhere around eight cents, uh, seven or kilowatt hour. And then once you tap on all the other fees and taxes and everything else, all in, you're about anywhere between sixteen and eighteen cents a kilowatt hour. So if you compare that to say California, California, they pay, I mean, their tier one rates are like forty five cents a kilowatt hour and they go up to the peak. The peak, summer peak rates get up into like the sixty cents a kilowatt hour. So your power is relatively inexpensive compared to some of the, 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 the more expensive markets. And so without the federal tax credit, without that thirty percent federal tax credit, you get into a situation where financially it's not as advantageous to you. So the reason why a P P A makes sense or power purchase agreement makes sense is because we're still able to, to, they, they trade the federal tax credit as tax, tax equities. And so the investors will come in, they'll provide the investment for uh, for the project, and then they are still able to take advantage of that tax credit. And so that, that allows us to hit that lower price per kilowatt hour. And it, 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 it gives us an avenue to be able to tap into that tax credit, if that makes sense.
I do have to agree with John. I, I would have a hard time right now with a letter of intent. Uh, first and foremost, I would have to understand what the commitment is. Right? Is there any kind of commitment of uh, uh, compensating for any costs if uh, you know, the project would, would, were, were not to come to fruition? But, but also as, as a public entity, and really anybody should be doing that, we need to get more than one offer on the table, right? And, and that really, if we were to commit, commit to you now to e, even, even if it's just a letter of intent without any, without any um, um, without any ties. We're not really able to do that without having two or three offers on the table. So a letter of intent would be very premature in that regard, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, so what a letter intent really does for us, it's, it's uh, more of a liability release, right? So if our engineer comes on site and does the site assessment, and it says that, and something happens, right? He's on there for like official business, and we're not going to come, nobody can sue you guys because he's protected under our, you know, workman's comp type of thing. The other thing that it does is, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
The, the other thing that it says to, uh, to answer your question, there is no financial obligation on your end. It's simply a good faith kind of agreement that says, hey, we're interested in looking into solar. We're, we're interested in working with these guys, but, but, but it also says that the information that we provide you in terms of preliminary design. And those kind of things, like you're not going to turn around and share the information that we're doing with you with another company, right?
So, and is that includes N D, N D A or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, because there's obviously a lot of front end work that we'll do in terms of, of design work. Um, and uh. And so we just, you know, that, that happens sometimes too, where people will go share the information and the quotes and everything that we're doing. Um, so it's, it's partly that as well. But um. But our, our job really is, is just to kind of educate everyone on, on the process. Um. It, it, it really, I mean, we are a company that does solar and we work in, in both the residential space and, and the commercial space. Um, but what we found, ninety five percent of our, our job really is just correcting miss uh, uh, misinformation uh, that's out there. And so if there's questions that you have, our job really is to just be, be um, a resource to you, to help you understand it. And if it ends up that we end up working together and, and we can help you, then that's great. At the end of the day, if it doesn't, then we always tell, tell people we're still friends too, you know, so. So we're, we're huge on, on relationships, um, especially when you're dealing with, with a large municipality and, you know, there has to be some kind of a working relationship. Especially in solar because there is so many moving parts and moving pieces and um, and there's a lot that, that, that um, goes into it. And so, um, anyway, with, with that said, I mean, really, if you guys have any, any questions for us. That's, that's what we're here for is to, to answer them for you.
I'll be honest with you. I have probably about ten questions that I've just wrote, wrote down. That goes all the way from liability, uh, you men, maintenance, uh, end of life, uh, you know, um, exit clauses, uh, how. Are we sitting there twenty five years from now with um, with a pile of uh, uh, support structures and, 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 and panels that we have to remove and pay for? Leach it, right? Any kind of P F S or, or, or lead runoff or something? I probably have about ten questions and that would totally blow this meeting uh, into oblivion. I don't know how staff and you have. You know, thought about handling this? Are we talking about this today? Was this a first get to know each other and then we take it from there and address the questions behind the scenes? How, how did you guys figure approaching this?
I think the, the, the purpose of the meeting today was to do a, a brief introduction, so you guys could get to know us. I think it was to kind of talk through the different options and uh, see if you have questions on purchase versus P P A. On the financial side, does it make more sense to own versus doing a power purchase agreement? Um, and answer any, any questions that you may have there. I think when it comes to any of the technical side of solar, we're happy to answer any of those, those questions as well. If we wanted to schedule another kind of separate meeting to just more of a Q and A on solar itself, we're happy to do that also. So really, this is your guys' meeting and we're just here to support and, and answer any questions that you guys might have, so.
I, I guess one important question is Wolf brought it up initially about um, being a public entity. Are we in fact obligated for multiple bids on something like this? If that's the case, I don't know how we would ever accomplish that. But um, my question is, is to you, Jeff, if you've done, have, have you done power purchase agreements with other municipal entities? Um, it, it's specifically here in New Hampshire, it, or maybe in New England in general. How have they treated that as far as the multiple bid? Are we subject to that? I'm not sure we're, we're actually subject to that if it's a power purchase agreement as opposed to a construction bid. You know, like our treatment plants, we're building through, tru, treatment plants. Yeah, we had to get multiple bids on something like that, but I don't know if that's the same case. For a power purchase agreement. And if we're subject to that, then do we need to have three? People in your position that are comparatively offering this to us? Because that just doesn't seem like it'll work to me, so. I see solar panels on municipal buildings all over the place. How does that happen?
Yeah, mo, most of the, with, with schools, uh, municipalities, I would say ninety nine percent of the time, they are power purchase agreements. And I don't know specifically when it comes to Meramec, um, if you guys requ, require multiple bids on that. Most of the time, we don't run into a situation where multiple bids are, are required because you're just simply replacing a power bill with a lower power bill. It would, it, it's similar to like the co-op uh, deal that you have right now where you've, you've negotiated an eight cent rate on simply the generation. Portion of your electricity, right?
Right.
Could you go out and get six cents or seven cents? Maybe, I don't know. Um, at some point, it kind of becomes, is a juice worth, you know, worth the squeeze, but. But I mean, for us, um, really, we're here to help support you guys. Most of the time, we don't see multiple bids. We just go out and get you the absolute best rate that we can, um, as far as what you're going to pay per, per kilowatt hour. And most of the time, it'll end up, I mean, in California, we see savings more in the thirty to forty percent range. Just because their power is so much more uh, um, expensive out there. And there's a lot more sun, but uh, New Hampshire, everything that we are seeing right now, see, we seem to think we can get and target that fifteen percent discount on, on what you're paying.
Something you may not know, Jeff, is, I mean, that we didn't talk about is that with, where this would be a twenty five year contract, it would have to go to the annual meeting as a warrant article to be voted on. And our annual meetings are um, in March of, of year.
They're in March, you said?
Yeah, it's actually next week for this year.
Is that too soon?
Well, I mean, I, I think we could do the legwork and then if we're planning on entering the agreement by then, a year doesn't sound too far away, but.
Right.
I think we need to figure out first how to go about if we need multiple bids and.
Technically, we do.
Technically, we do for, so when we do our power. We actually have an energy broker, he'll go out and solicit.
The beds.
A half a dozen different contracts that. We can enter into and you know, various length and time and at different rates and and we choose. Which ones works for us, but. Yeah, it's kind of. He's doing the bit work for us, he's finding those those um. Different vendors that and and the rates.
Right, so in the case, in the case here, we wouldn't wanna have, we 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 wouldn't do three. Letters of intent with three separate.
No, but I think to verify if that's what we need to do for three, then.
Right.
That um you know, Veo and Solo Pros that do their bid and then Constellation can try and compete with them. To see if they can get anything better and that would cover us, but obviously going backwards on your. Costs is not, is gonna be really hard to compete with.
Right.
Yeah, you you. Not to cut anyone off, but just from a PPA to a PPA standpoint. It's not a change and there's no liability or any capital coming out of anyone's pocket, so it's not like it's a construction when you're gonna go. Build a new tank or put a new well in where you have to get multiple construction bids or. Office space or whatever would be, it's a switching of no debt, there's no debt that's being acquired on your end. There's liability involved, obviously, by site by site of where it'd be building. But from a PPA standpoint of the actual an agreement being signed towards that, there wouldn't it. I wouldn't as- assume, just from my experience doing PPAs. That you would need a multiple bid structure, but I don't. I'm not, I don't work for the the treatment facility, so that's obviously something that you guys would definitely know more of.
I mean, at a minimum, I would expect that we we do need to. Have the due diligence and get in touch with more than one vendor for the initial discussion. Right, and and compare the approach and compare maybe the projected savings and 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 commitments, right? Now, and and please don't, gentlemen, please don't hear me trying to be negative about that, I'm all for looking into it. I just worked in the industry for a number of years, but on the panel builder side, on on the automation uh. Manufacturing side of the panel builds, but I I have a couple of people that are working in the industry and. You know, have subscriptions on LinkedIn for their channel, so I see a lot of these discussions happening and that's part of a little. Poke in here, but this is not to be negative by any means, I I do support the project in general. But also wanna make sure we're not. You know, John made it very, made it, said it the way it needs to be said, we can't commit to anything at this point without having more information. And more information means to have also, I believe, a better understanding of the market, which we don't right now, have right now. You guys are the first ones presenting to us here and I'm personally completely clueless as to. Whether that's an interesting proposal or not, right? A competitive proposal, I really just don't. So uh we do have the fiduciary responsibility that we do get a better feel for for the situation. I'm assuming this is a two-step quote anyway, right? You guys are putting out some 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 preliminary. Projections, right, to. To get us to commit to a letter of intent for you guys to do more detailed analysis then, right, with your research?
Yeah, once.
And at that point. Go ahead.
Yeah, once, once we kind of have at least a preliminary letter of intent, then we'll follow that up with a site survey. Where we'll have a guy come out there to the different sites. You know, look at roof space, look at. Site maps and you know, potential areas where we can put panels. And that's a pretty, pretty exhaustive process.
How long does that take until you get to that point where you can report back?
I would say probably, I mean, realistically, that's probably a thirty day deal, I mean, to get somebody out there. Um to do the site assessment. And then to get all that data back to the engineer to start coming up with the preliminary design. Then we start looking at offset, like how much of your power can we actually offset with solar? You know, it might be fifty percent, we might be able to get a hun- full full hundred percent, um. And so then one, once we determine offset. And the amount of sun hours that we have, then we can start to calculate, okay, what's the actual cost savings here? We said fifteen percent, actually, it looks like it's better than what we thought. It looks like we we may even be able to hit like a twenty-five percent discount on what you're paying for your power. So, um. I think we're comfortable at this point with some of the preliminary satellite imaging that we've done with the sites to know that. Fifteen percent is is pretty likely. Um but that that's why we kind of say it's a little bit of a. Of a process of working together and having a relationship of like, hey, let's. Let's let's do this this walk together and we'll we'll present the data as we get it, um. Because the numbers are what they are, I mean, the sun is what the sun is and. You know, panel costs to buy panels and. And inverters, there's not a whole lot of very, you know, variation in 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 the materials for this. And labor costs are what they are, um and so.
Maybe a way out of this is I. I don't think it should be an issue for us to sign an N D A, because all we're signing is that we're not giving your information to a third party. I think that would be, for for speaking for myself, that should be an easy one for for. I I would be comfortable signing that, no problem, any day. Um if you could separate the letter of intent and and you know, the N D A, um. For you to get started with your work, that might be helpful to to break that gridlock a little bit up.
Yeah, I think too is is if you guys are comfortable just including some wording in there just about liability that, you know, that. I mean, that protects you guys and us too, that. This is an official. You know, our guy's not there just for fun, he's actually working and then that that uh. That kind of protects everybody there too, just in terms of liability if something were to happen.
I guess my concern with an N D A is if we're reviewing these proposals at a public meeting. Like these are. How can we really say that we're protecting their information and their work product? If we have to have multiple of them?
Yeah.
You know, we are in a public forum now and our meetings are public.
I suppose we could have a key on the paperwork that says company A is so and so company.
So, yeah, that would be my only concern is that. Um we we have to review these in a public forum, so I'm not sure how. Non-compete we can keep in someone's information.
Yeah, I guess just leave a generic company A, company B, as long as we remember to follow that type of protocol or something.
I think you're more concerned about sharing drawings and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I mean.
I think it's more on a system design standpoint for sure, the the cost benefit, it's not really, I think you said it's. You can't really change what the actual base cost of the product is, it's more about. What we thinks best versus what the company B thinks best versus what company C thinks best, and then what approach they're taking towards that. Us not getting our information shared of how we approach our PPA with our system and. Our system design and everything like that, I think that's probably. More apt of why the N D A is more important on our end, it's not really about. Aveo versus Sun Power versus your local mom and pop shop, it's not, I don't think it's, it's less about that, more about the actual design.
So I just wanna kind of talk a little bit about the. The fifteen percent, like, is that market conditions, is that? Because if it comes out like you say it's gonna come out. And we get a fifteen percent savings. And a fifty percent offset. That's eighteen thousand five hundred dollars a year. About fifteen hundred dollars a month in savings. Which doesn't seem as significant as it was in my mind before tonight.
So the the savings, uh Jeff, you can go, you're good.
So your your average monthly bills right now are about thirty thousand, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, so it's about forty-five hundred.
Well, if I look in the budget tonight, you've spent two hundred thousand so far, the budget's two ninety. And we're way under, so I use two hundred and fifty as an annual expense.
So fifteen percent of that you're looking at, right, for savings?
It's thirty-seven five.
Thirty-seven thousand a year?
Thirty-seven thousand five hundred a year, and if we're only getting fifty percent offset, we cut that in half, right? Is that the correct math?
That would that would be correct math, yeah. If you're only saving to ten on half of.
So the my concern with that is not saving eighteen thousand five hundred a year, but what happens if other alternatives? Become lower than the solar rate over the course of the twenty-five year contract? And so our savings could be diluted in that event.
Yeah, and I think I think where where most people view this, they view the. Two percent riser as a as a protection as well that. You know, we all look at gas prices and if we could have locked in gas prices a couple of years ago at two forty ninety gallon, we probably would have done that. Knowing that it was only gonna go up a couple percent every year. So the other benefit of this program is that. If electricity rates. Go up like they are in other areas throughout the country and start increasing fifteen to twenty percent. And you know that your rate's only gonna go up two percent every year. Then you can kind of see over time that. Amount in savings only increases every single year above and beyond.
That's true.
What's the fifty percent reduction you're talking about? Is that what?
He's talking about how much we can actually offset the call whole bill, like, there's no guarantee that what they could put in. Will offset the entire bill.
Well, so so depending on how a site survey comes back based on system design, if we design a system that's. Say a hundred five percent offset of what your this past twelve fiscal year. Of usage was that you're using, then we guarantee that we'll cover that up to a hundred five percent. Of that usage or at a hundred five percent, we'll guarantee that. I think what Jeff was saying is just the viability of a system, say you have. They go, say. Tower A and Tower B or water tower A and B, one has the best sun hours you can possibly get. And one has fifty percent actual shading. If we can maximally build here and that still only covers about sixty percent of your power. But then building here, the same amount of panels is about twenty percent. Is it better to have eighty percent combined or just sixty percent when this is not that viable for sun hours, if that makes sense? Does that make sense to some degree? It's just it's just picking the most viable spot. And what's the one really, really good thing about just ever sources utility that they're for the lines themselves is you can aggregate meters there. Or meter aggregations when you can have multiple systems. All pulling to mul- multiple meters, but as long as they're under one account, which in your case they would be. You can cover the actual full offset in different areas based on what your usage is across the board.
Does everyone?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Kind of what Cole's talking about.
So basically, they're saying if they put a field of panels at the warehouse. Because the other places are too shady and we can run everything off that one field, we still don't have to pay for the other things cuz. We're generating the power there.
If you have. Fields and that, that's what those meters combine into an account, so you just bank it, bank it, and then it did.
Everything else comes out of the same account.
Right.
So, yeah, you aggregate your total total usage. And then your total total production. And total production could be at one site, it doesn't have to be spread out across all of them. But that's how the utility company will 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 look at it. What's your total consumption and then your total total production across? Those ten or twelve different bills or meters that you have. But that's all part of the site audit when we have somebody out there and then there's a lot of work with the utility company. To coordinate all that, sometimes they have limitations, um. For example, ever source. The maximum system size that they'll allow you to build is nine hundred and ninety-nine kilowatt hour, uh nine hundred and ninety-nine kilowatts. And so, I'm sorry. Just under a megawatt, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand kilowatts is the largest. System size they'll allow you to build. So, um. Anyway, there's a lot of work coordinating with the utility company to make sure. That they can handle the exports, sometimes there's upgrades they have to do to the transformers to handle the inflow and outflow of. Of current, so.
Did you have an estimate on the uh the survey?
As far as timeline of when we can do it?
Didn't you say that would cost us some money?
No. No, there's there's no cost to you guys, it's all. This is work that we do on the front end, but kind of how I kick things off with, we don't typically. Invest money and send guys out there unless there's kind of a good faith agreement that like, yeah, let's. Let's look, let's look into this together, you know?
All right. I think we gotta probably entertain other um. Discussions as well then, if we have to go along with multiple or at least determine if that's what we need to do. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, some. Some some uh municipal, most of them that we deal with, because this is a little bit different where it's not a. A capital expenditure, they don't really require multiple bids, but you guys may be different. But you guys can kind of talk some on yourself to figure out if if that's needed or not.
I don't think we should be different, cuz I mean, as far as I know, a village district is the same thing as a school district, is the same thing as a. Incorporated township, so. Whatever flies for a town or a school district, I think would apply to a. To a village district, which we are too, so.
Do you have a form letter for this letter of intent, Jeff, or do you leave it to John's legal counsel?
I, yeah, we have a few different versions, uh we have one for a purchase and then one for a power purchase agreement. And.
If you want to, if you want to send that over, we'd have our legal review it and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let us know if there's a way we can potentially alter it to. Allow us to just get a couple of other bids and say, hey, we we wanna go down the road. As long as all these things are true. And as long as this comes out. But we wanna go with the provider that we feel gives us the best value, hopefully that's you. Um but we, I do think there should be one or two other options in there. Just for making sure everybody's in the ballpark.
Yeah, I think we're 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 comfortable with that. I can, I can send that over, I apologize, I'm I'm actually in Hawaii on vacation this week, but I'll be back Wednesday, so. Towards the end of this week, I can probably get something over to Jill and then uh she can. Pass along the template for your for your review to see if it's uh. If there's any tweaks or anything that you guys would wanna.
Well, good for you, working on your vacation.
Yeah, appreciate that.
And what I'll do is uh, so my bunch of questions that I had, I'll just send it uh to staff and they can address it with you guys and maybe then at a later time, you guys can. You know, step forward. Or staff can report back to outside of the meeting, it's not necessarily something we have to always discuss in meetings.
Yeah, if if you need me or Jeff's email, you can directly question, send us questions based off direct email or staff, whatever works for you, like.
It would definitely go through staff because they they're the ones that need to, you know, present it to the board in the end.
Okay, cool. Yes, yes, whatever works best for you guys, that's, we're we're gonna work for you guys.
Okay.
Great. Good. Well, thanks for your time, I appreciate that, I learned a lot today, I don't think I knew any of this, so that that definitely helps. You probably get that a lot, maybe, I don't know, but.
Yeah, cuz I I I I work in ma- majority in the door-to-door space of the residential solar. Um been deep diving more and more into the commercial side, um. I'm sure if you live in Merrimack, you guys know that have heard at least the Twodowsky family. Yeah. I I set up Eric Twodowsky's business on a work for a commercial project that covers his house and his business. Uh probably about six months ago, maybe seven months ago, there was this past summer. I set it up and got that everything installed there, so. Got that done, um but yeah, you'd be surprised, but not surprised, it's especially in the door-to-door space, it's, you talk to forty, fifty people a day that. I've never heard a single word that you just said, so I definitely understand, that's why I say when you're like, oh, okay, that's interesting, it's. We hear, we hear it quite a bit, so that's awesome. Good to know that, it's cool.
Yep, yep, thanks, thanks for that. All right, anybody else have any other questions? I guess we can uh. Move on, I appreciate you guys taking the time to be here and unfortunately, you're at the end of your vacation, but. Appreciate you taking the time too and. And have a safe trip home and hopefully we'll be in touch with you, uh you know, and in the next few weeks or whenever the case may be.
That sounds great, appreciate the time, everyone, and if there's any questions, don't. Don't hesitate to reach out, email or whatever, we're happy to help.
Well, we definitely wanna look into it, uh power is a big part of our budget and um we have. A lot of land, a lot of roof spaces, so um hopefully we can do something about it. Um the last question I have is I don't know if you've dealt with the PFAS issue, we've certainly dealt with it. And you know, there were, um I have heard in the industry that. At one time, at least, a lot of solar panels were treated with PFAS, so the snow slides off. You know, easily and it's a a water repellent type of product, I don't know how familiar you are with it, but. Um ho- hopefully they, the panels of today aren't coated with PFAS product anymore, but. Um, that, that would certainly be something we'd be interested in knowing for sure anyway, so. Um, if, if you want to look into that and let us know if that's the case, I think we'd appreciate that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. I'll try to get some more information on that for you and the next time we. We chat, I can present that to the group.
Alright. Alright, great. Appreciate that.
Hey, thanks everyone. Appreciate the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, guys.
Alright, so, um, moving on the agenda, we're at the, uh, review of the minutes. So we've got, uh, two minutes in front of us. Yeah, February twenty-sixth, regular board of commissioners meeting. As well as the public hearing. Uh, minutes. So, um. We can, if anybody has any, um. Comments or edits to offer on that. You can do them individually or together if there's no edits. Whatever the pleasure of the board may be. I don't have any edits. We've made them in the past. Are you moving both wolf? Is that what you're saying?
Sure, sure. Let's move away.
Alright, motion by Wolf, uh, second by John, all those in favor of approving both the regular session and the public hearing. Uh, minutes for February twenty-sixth, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Wolf, you're in favor?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so that, uh, both minutes passed four zero zero. Uh, next on the agenda is the action items. And, uh. Looks like the first item, number two, due in April. Number twenty-three, the next one is in May, the next one's April, May, September. See here, we have anything.
Salt sign.
The salt sign for March, any movement on that one?
No, that was, so they want to see that contract signed or the, the, the.
Letter from.
The letter and. Letter of support.
Yeah.
Uh, from the town and. The different departments before they'll move it, so.
Okay. Um, so the next one here would be number seventy-nine.
Do you want to change that one to sixty-seven to April?
Hopefully we'll move April because we actually have that, uh.
Can you mute yourself?
Oh, yeah, is that, sorry, I didn't realize there was any.
Get some feedback noise or something there. Uh, but I think, yeah, so like Aaron mentioned, if you, if you can change, um, number sixty-seven, the last column. Put that in for April instead of March, if you could.
Yep, absolutely.
Alright. Um, so the next one that would be due for discussion would be the, uh, number seventy-nine. Uh, looks like that's kind of cut off a little bit, but I think it says staff to give an update on the water line extensions. At Paul Mary, Gerard, Wilson Hill and Mulliken Mason Roads and Farmer Road.
So a mailing went out on Friday to the residents of the two projects, project areas. Uh, was the background of the project as well as the progress and a rough timeline. And, uh. Who to reach out to with any questions. Um, the fieldwork for the survey assessing sort of additions has been. During, uh, we're planning to meet Friday, uh, this Friday, uh. Twenty-second to go over the thirty percent design. Uh, the final design, design with, uh, the H D S for approval. Uh, once the design is approved, the project will be put out for bid. Anticipate the construction will begin this fall. Uh, the new water main is. It's scheduled to be completed early as June of twenty-five, but may extend longer as needed. Based on the final design. Design details. Contract is progress. I do plan on having a public pre-con meeting in the late summer, part of the beginning of any work, so.
Have you guys discussed that? I know these were two separate, um, grant awards. Is this going to be considered like one project? With one bidder or is it? Those have to be separated out?
Doesn't have to be separated out, so it can be done better, but. It, it's as far as I know, I will.
Probably going to be a separate contract so they can be tracked by two separate grants.
Contracts, yeah.
I did talk to D E S and they actually recommended having a two separate contractors so that way you're not waiting on one project, project to finish to get to the next one.
Unless they can, yeah, unless you get someone large enough to do double crews.
And obviously if the price comes in better, you know, even if it's the same contractor with the better prices, I guess. We have the option of selecting that, is that the case? Cause if, if, if we don't cover all the costs, then with the, with the grant, then we have to come up with the difference, obviously, so. I think we have the ability to weigh that when the time comes, I would think, right?
We shouldn't hope, yes.
You don't know that these grants expire or anything, Joe? You're not aware of. There was an expiration like.
No, they, they typically have an expiration date that don't give you. Years or they'll give you construction period, but that's all part of the. Application process too.
Alright, okay. Alright, well, that's good. That's moving forward. Um, so the next, uh, March item is number eighty-eight, development of PFAS. Uh, carbon filtration media alternative vendor plan.
It's kind of in my mind. I haven't put it on paper yet, but I think it's also going to have to be contingent on what we get from media. Uh, the piloting as well, so.
Uh, so whatever you have in place now, I think we're going with that other, um.
We have, you're right.
That other vendor basically and. Um, you might have updates on any, I don't think we've done any change outs since the last meeting.
No, it's, um. April sixteenth.
Yeah, and that's what Wells four and five, I think, okay.
My thought was basically to decide to do a change out. Completely change out. We pick, what, you know, whichever well we choose first, well, it's four or five, literally change that out. We can actually have that media, the media that we take out, our, the media that we own. Uh, they can store it. We can use that as the regen.
Yeah. Make up.
As we make up the makeup for the other, um, wells as we do, do a regen. And we draw off that once it's down to a point where we can pick another. Yeah, two vessels to do and, and work, kind of burn through it. I mean, we'll at some point have some left over, but.
Okay. Um, so what do you want to do about this number? Is this something we want to just, uh, push off? Past, um, March or I know you, you, you originally just made the comment about having the pilot test. Results, that's probably a year out, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Is there anything we need to do in the interim or, um? If, if it's basically as simple as what you just said, do we need a policy on it? I don't know what.
I know there were some other options as well, so I'll, I can. Let's do next month. I will give you the.
Right, whatever you feel is appropriate.
Some other options, that's, that's fine.
Alright, so, um. Was that number eighty-eight? Uh, can Amanda, can you change the date on the last column from March to April?
Yep.
It looks like number ninety, we already discussed today, which was March, um. That seems to be, uh, like an ongoing thing, I think, um, we want to. Try to look, I don't know what we want to do for that next is to try to get some other. Other people to, to talk to or anything like that, um.
I'm going to figure out if, um, we need three quotes.
Right. Let's put that back for April. Change it from March to April and we'll at least get feedback from, um. Jeff was supposed to supply an example, letter of intent for us to review and.
Yeah.
Have legal counsel look at that.
Now, were they two separate competing companies?
No.
They were one, that works together. Okay, that, that was slightly unclear and that's what I was asking.
Yeah, maybe it was more on the larger scale.
Commercial, the other ones.
Yeah, larger.
Okay.
Multiple fields, that type of thing.
Okay, that's what, that was just my question. It was. I feel better about it now.
Yeah, I do feel like we should get two or three quotes. The guy said he would send over a. An example of the letter of intent. And then my thought was that we share with Carrie. Ask her how we can alter it such that it would allow us to say we're. Interested in going into the market, but we're going to go with the best value. Of these two or three vendors and he seemed to be comfortable with that.
I like that Wolf had a list of questions because as he was saying the questions, they were all things in my head, like what happens? What do we do with it in twenty-five years? Is it like a lease to own? Like, I like what I had, like, and. You, you obviously have more experience than I, we do with it, but I was just like, I have like a bunch of questions because. You know, I feel I, like, at what point can we not turn back? You know, that kind of stuff because, you know, there's going to be a contract eventually with a bunch of terms in it.
Yeah.
I don't want, you know.
I'll send my questions to staff. I'll copy you guys. Obviously we can't have an email discussion, but you're welcome to send your own questions to staff also. And they can consult, consolidate those questions and forward them to the, uh, to the vendor and we take them there and they can present the results back to us.
Good. Alright.
I almost think not so much the multiple contracts will be an issue. I think it's the. Multiple years of signing into a contract because typically you, we need some sort of, uh. Exit clause i- if we need to get out of it within a year, so.
Yeah.
Which is like a ton of infrastructure. Like if they're putting infrastructure on like all the roofs or like, that just seems like. A ton of infrastructure to be, to like pull the plug and be like, yeah, we don't, you, you know. It's the whole thing makes me a little nervous.
Seems like. Small amount.
I thought it would be more too.
They're going to be putting them all over the distribution site. I think that's the space we can't use it more.
I was thinking mainly roofs, but that's why.
Right, yeah, because you don't want like. Like, like Wells four and five, if we're going to do. Yeah, I just, I guess I don't, like, I, I want to know more information, but then they want to commit it before they give you information. I'm like, I don't know how I can do this.
That's kind of my personal.
But they just want to know that we, we, you as a board want to look into it further.
Right. I just, I don't, I want to know where we can.
I'd be comfortable saying that, but.
Walk away.
And as a commitment to the individual company and that's why I kind of asked the question the way I did. Um, when you had to run upstairs and it did seem comfortable with introducing a couple of other companies, so I think we should, we can, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so let's, let's, uh, just change the date from March to April and we'll see whatever the update is and this is probably something. It's going to play out over the next several months. We might have, want to have monthly. Updates on it, whatever progress, but. I think for now, let's just change that date to April. If we can get the letter of intent example over to Carrie, get her thoughts on it. See if we can schedule and if there's anyone else, um, you know, Wolf's questions. We can get those answered. We'll have something to talk about at the next meeting on that, I think. Everybody's good with that.
Sure.
Alright, uh, so the next item for March looks like, um. Uh, cost of, uh, flushing water wasted at well seven and eight. Any.
Still working on that. I, I, we're looking into some older emails and, and actually get a. Summary together for you guys, um.
Okay.
So I'm still working on it.
Alright, so the ninety-four, uh, you want to push that off another month or two or what do you?
Next month will be fine.
Alright, so ninety-four, if you can, uh, change that to, um. April Amanda and number ninety-five, it's, uh, looks like just a, um. Update on the, uh, the St. Cobain water main extensions that are, uh, slated for.
Yeah.
Marimac.
So I spoke with WSP last week and St. Cob- St. Cobain has agreed to proceed with the award, awarding of the work. Two selected contractors, Joseph P. Cardelo and Son Inc. For the water main extension piece of it. And S U R Construction West Inc. For the entrances. We're currently waiting to go through some file pricing. And our supply updates because it's out of the sixty-day period, um, before they move forward, but they, uh. And they expect it'll take another week or so.
I guess WSP is the designer for St. Cobain hired by St. Cobain.
They're the, uh, engineering firm.
Right. And this is, uh, just listed on here is going to serve. Water to MBD water is going to be provided to. Christopher Wildcat Falls Pearson and Wire Road. There may be some other. Roads included in there that.
Um.
Um, are not mentioned here or something, but that, that's the general area.
That's pretty much all of them.
I was piercing that.
More than, um. Aren't hooked up, ought to have meeting water, but they have water running by it, so there's a couple of other random ones in that list.
These properties, but they could be, be, um. Water hookups are. Are more randomly dropped off a road. I know there's one, a couple out there.
Yep.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Just so I can sleep tonight, how did you get water to window or landing without going off Pearson?
There is a. So Kathy Street to.
Through the swamp?
Through the swamp. Well, it wasn't a swamp, but it was originally run.
The beavers came to town and then, yeah.
Got it.
I used to live out there too. I was wondering the same thing. Okay. Uh, is this something probably want to update in, in a month or two or?
I'll keep updating as it goes through, so.
Alright, so, uh, number ninety-five, just change the date on that for April and, uh. We'll bring that back next month. And that's good for the action items. We're still keeping it to one page. While we're here.
Yeah, I would like to add one. So. Remember last meeting, we talked a lot about cybersecurity, information security and about potentially engaging with a contractor. And. Maybe this, and I'm not just doing this because I'm partially working in that industry. It really has me scared to be to a certain extent. And I have been approached about it by multiple people in the last couple of years, um, that they have concerns about that. I would like to have. Uh, an action item there that we revisit this, um, at least, you know, no later than two months from now. With, uh, staff coming back to us with an update as to which. Uh, contractors to engage in. I still also have several questions that are not yet answered. That I sent to staff, uh, uh, when, when I brought the subject up initially, there's a couple of things that have not been answered. Um, and that are vulnerabilities, they need to be addressed or at least clarified and understood, you know, what these are. So there's a follow-up that needs to be happening and we can do some of that offline between me and staff. But I think we need to also get a report back. What do we do as far as, um, engaging with, um, third parties to make sure we are prepared?
I hate to say that, Wolf. We can say, can we get more concise?
Follow up, follow up on cyber security questions or info, cyber security and information security is really two different things. And I'll address the rest then with, uh, staff in an email.
Alright.
Again, we have to remember, this was important enough that the federal government had a year hearing about it, but this was specifically addressed, so this is not just something. That I'm spinning out of thin air. Uh, it was a very, very recent thing that was, uh. Going through the press significantly and we all know how, how the world has changed in the last two, three years, so.
Right.
At times, uh, IT company like cloud five will send out a monthly report saying, you know, this is what you have in place. This is. Up to date, this needs to be addressed. This is the risk that it poses. This is. What we did this month, but all the different kind of snapshots of what's going on. They might be able to provide us with something like that to help at least facilitate the discussion.
Follow up with them.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright, so you go to Amanda, you've got that next step, um, last action item to add there.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, uh, so what do we get next here on the agenda is the, um. Old business? Anybody has any old business? Don't have anything? Or new business? You know, Aaron just stepped out, so maybe you want to get back to that and make sure she doesn't have anything, but. Uh, in the meantime, if you want to do the superintendent report, Ron.
So like I mentioned earlier, well, five is down. Uh, Baron Miller came out on Friday and he hoped, you know, looked at the. Took some readings and stopped and determined that the. Pump motor itself seems to be fine. It just, it was pumping, it also just, just stopped and the motor was running, but nothing was coming out, so.
It might be a mechanical thing.
Shaft or an impeller or something. It'll be in tomorrow and you'll, and you'll pull that.
Talking about well five. Okay.
Uh, DOT project on Continental. DOT project on Continental. Will be starting soon, there's a pre-con scheduled for tomorrow at ten, at town hall. And I will. Better know the schedule tomorrow, I can let the board know that as well, when I, when I find more.
Which project is this again?
The Continental, the DOT project, the Continental Boston Post Road.
Is that on Continental? I thought it was just.
There's some work on Continental, they're going to be.
Down by Pennechuck Square, is it?
Yeah, right in the. Almost to, the work sounds to be like by enterprise to one-on-one and then there's some work on one-on-one.
Right, and then Boston Post Road by the church and all that.
Then we have some water mains that we need to have moved.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any update on the Everett Turnpike work over there?
Not, I've.
Nothing since the last.
Yeah, since last one.
Okay. No, one. One-on-eight.
One-on-eight.
Really?
Yep, just the.
That's not going to be a nightmare.
Building a parking lot.
So they're changing the Craftsman Road, is it, that cuts through where that church is off of Boston Post Road? And we have water mains in there and it's our obligation and we have to pay to move our water lines to accommodate. Their change in the whole layout.
Good to be careful.
Yeah.
Actually, that one there, it's covered, because it's new enough.
Oh, really? So the design life was new enough that we got more of a credit on that or something?
You get more of a credit on that, that, that was taken care of, it's the continental. That piece we're getting, we're paying for.
Isn't that where the Pennechuck Interchange is?
Yeah, they're going to have to move some work, do some water main work as well.
The booster station's okay though.
The boosters, yeah, no, the boosters are fine.
What are they adding another lane all the way up one-on-eight there?
I almost thought it was going to be two, two turn lanes.
Yes, I did hear something about two turn lanes.
Alright.
Now on the bank side, I think they're putting in. Two as well coming in, or that's, sorry, not two, its own designated turn lane.
Oh, so you have to wait at the light.
Right.
Turn on to Continental.
You know, the one person.
Know if it goes all the way to one-on-one or?
Basically right in that corridor area.
Stop at Pennechuck Square.
Yeah, and down as far as Boston Post.
Right.
As far as I know.
Been talking about this a while, I think I went up to the DOT like two years ago with you or something.
I went to project meetings probably ten years ago. This has been around a very long time.
Any other superintendent report item?
Were you guys, I was set with the two and nine, remember on the payroll manifest? It was the. It said issue and then like there was really no issue, which is.
Oh, yeah.
Go airbound and we had something going after.
Yeah, there was some overtime or something.
Time, okay, and I just didn't know what it was. Yeah, I think it was just because it was worded issue. More descriptive only.
Alright, that's good.
Then just the, the last thing I have is our annual meeting is next Tuesday, March twenty-sixth at seven P M. At the Merumack High School. It'll be, and it'll be in the cafeteria.
Okay. Do we normally go over who's going to move the Warren articles and all that stuff? Or is that going to be read by Mark? Because there's the description and then there's the actual Warren article and.
I've laid it out two different ways and they've never worked out, so.
I know. Well, that's what I'm saying.
We normally assign who talks to what Warren article and.
Right.
And all of that, so yes.
I like that better because Mark really has, no offense to him, but he does not, not know much about what the district state business is, right, so. Personally, I, I think the way we did it that one time was better, where each commissioner had a role to play. And he basically just moderated the meeting, but if we do that, he needs to know that that's our plan.
Well, and we also have to do it tonight, because we're not going to.
You can leave a horse to water.
Find that tonight.
That's why I was bringing that up. Do we have a copy of the Warren article?
So this is, I have one right here. Even though Wolf told me not to keep papers.
Sorry to be late for this guy, but. Bring this out now before the meeting comes up on us.
You don't like surprises?
No.
Okay.
Oh, there'll be a surprise.
I've heard it through the other deliberative sessions. I have one.
I'll just make a note myself on which ones, who, who's reading which ones, basically, that's all. Okay. Alright, so the first three is nothing, it's just vote related. What's article four is basically the budget? And.
About it.
Well, also, is there like a little paragraph that's written?
There will be.
Yeah, so we'll have the copy of that right in front of us.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, alright, so number four, does someone? Is it just the commissioners that typically read these?
Yeah.
Well, we had Mark goes out read them last time and then we kind of went with, well, you're supposed to read it, like you were supposed to read one. I said he was the one that was talking to it, so that he was.
I think he read the whole thing, so yeah, so like if he would read the opener. Remark type, basically what the article.
The article wordage.
Reads the Warren article.
Somebody would move it.
Somebody seconds it and then the person who moved it goes back and talks about it.
Reads that little blurb at the bottom.
So don't give him the blurb.
Wow.
Ask the blurbs and have them labeled and don't give him the blurb, just say, you know, so-and-so to speak on it. How's that? Let's see how it goes.
Alright, so I'm making a little thing here about who's going to move it, who's going to second it, who's going to speak to it in the article number. So article four. Who wants to move that?
Was the mover and the speaker going to be the same people?
There's a move, there's a second, the mover and the speaker, I assume would, yeah.
Be the same people.
Yes, yeah.
Usually the. Chairs move the budgets.
Alright.
Because they're the biggest.
I will move that. Somebody want to second it?
I'll second it if you want to.
I mean, Ken's not here, so he's going to get off scot-free for the annual meeting. We can, we give him something.
Give him something, give him whatever we know.
Give him the longest article.
Maybe you should give him the budget.
Yeah, it's because four to eight, right? Four, five, six, seven, eight.
Well, it's a junior member, I don't, I don't need one.
Oh, Article eight is not really.
Article eight is just if we had any other business.
Is that, is that standard? I don't remember seeing that one before.
I hadn't put it on there last year, except it was so that they could close the meeting.
Oh, okay. Alright, so I'm moving number four.
I'll second it.
Aaron's going to second it. And I will speak to it. Article number five is the, what is that? The ninety-nine thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars for system development capital reserve.
I can do that.
You want to move that, you said?
Sure.
I'll second.
I don't necessarily have to answer all the questions, right? Like, I can just read what's there and.
Read what's there if there's any questions.
The first.
Look at Dawn, like, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, Kristen's the one that, yeah.
Right, 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 okay.
So Wolf, you're seconding.
Sure, we'll second the number five, John moved it. Article six, eight hundred thousand dollar for the district's equipment and facilities capital reserve fund.
I'll move that one.
Alright, so Wolf will move, you want to put Ken on the second on that one?
Sure. He said yes.
Number seven. Wrote, vote to raise and appropriate two hundred thousand dollars to the purchase of water and or operations of G A C. Treatment.
I guess I'll move that one.
I can second it.
Alright, second by John. Number eight. Does that actually need to be? All that too, I guess. It says, number article eight, this article is to transact any other business and close the meeting.
I feel like Ken should move the closure.
Yeah, let's give it to Ken, he'll move that one.
I'll second.
Alright, Wolf a second.
And you're writing that on the, on the cheat sheet, right?
I'll write it up, I'm with it. Mark's instructions.
Yeah, so if you give Mark just the Warren articles, he'll read the Warren articles. Then the person will move it, that's assigned to it.
Right.
Second, that's assigned to it.
And then the mover.
Can read the paragraph that describes it. I don't, I don't think there's going to be any description on article eight, right?
No.
Not really sure what.
I think he just has to move the.
I guess it's essentially moving to close the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Alright. It's a strange.
Move to adjourn.
Yeah, pretty much.
So we have to move to approve article eight.
Yeah, which is.
In adjourn, yeah.
So. Do we need to ask if there's any tran, is there any other business to transact?
I don't know, asking a whole room full of people if they want anything else is kind of a dangerous situation.
I don't know.
I don't know what the intent of that is.
Said that, oh, it's been a couple of years, I meant to tell you to, you know, put this article on and close the meeting. But instead of meeting, we can't come up with new Warren articles or anything on the fly, so I'm not sure what it does.
I don't either. You could bet you're going to have questions on it. Alright. So we'll, we'll just make sure Ken's aware of that, and you said you're going to print, you're going to just note who is the moving and seconding or whatever.
Instruction's going to be very clear, so that.
She's going to highlight all of our parts and give us each a script, so you can.
Alright, so.
If you guys don't want, don't need the Warren articles, I'll take them back, so I printed them back.
I didn't touch them, so.
I brought my.
Got the notes on, I don't know.
Oh, you can hold on to yours.
Okay.
You're good, I'm clean on that one.
This is mine.
And we're going to get keepers.
So the only other thing here on the agenda, questions from the press in public, we have no public in the room, is there anyone on the Zoom panel?
Nope.
Nobody on the Zoom panel, then. The next meeting will be the annual meeting, March twenty-sixth, seven P M. At the high school. After that, the regularly scheduled meeting will be April fifteenth, right here at five P M. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by John, second by Aaron, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, Wolf, you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Alright, that's four zero zero, meeting is adjourned and we'll see everybody at the annual meeting, thanks.